Hi, everyone, and welcome. We're just getting everyone admitted from our waiting room and getting it livestreamed on Facebook as well. So we appreciate your patience. Morgan, do you want to let me know when we're good to get started?
Yes, will do. Just give me one second. Okay. We are live.
Great. Let's go ahead and get started. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Seattle City Council Position Nine Candidates Forum. My name is Maddie Von Hoff. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm the Vice Chair of the 43rd District Democrats. Before I have the privilege to introduce our moderator for this evening, I have a few announcements. Please note, as Morgan just said, this is being recorded and is currently being livestreamed to our Facebook page. Chat will be disabled throughout the program, but please feel free to participate in the discussion on our livestream over on Facebook. Thank you so much to everyone who submitted questions in advance as well. And finally, a plug to become a member of the 43rd District Democrats. Our ability to create programs and forums such as this are a direct result of the strength of our membership. Not only that, but our members will also get an opportunity to vote in our endorsements meeting on June 15th, which is a Tuesday, so two Tuesdays from now. If you are not currently a member, new members have until this Saturday, June 5th at 11:59 PM to register in order to be able to vote in our endorsements meeting on June 15th. If you are returning 2020 member, you have until June 14th at 11:59 PM to renew. However, please try to do this sooner as it's a huge help to our all volunteer board. We will be posting how to register as a 43rd District Democrats member in the chat momentarily. Now, it's my pleasure to introduce Erica Barnett. Erica Barnett is a longtime local journalist and the editor of Publicola, an online publication focusing on local news and politics in Seattle and around the state. She's been covering Seattle City Hall since 2001. Please join me in welcoming Erica here this evening. Thank you, Erica. Take it away.
Well, good evening, everybody. It's an honor to be with all of you here tonight. Excuse me. Hopefully, that frog will leave my throat. Hosting this forum for the members of the 43rd District Democrats and the public to hear directly from the top candidates for Seattle City Council Position Nine about how they would address the biggest challenges facing our city if elected. The format for tonight is as follows. We'll kick things off with a two-minute introductory statement from each candidate, followed by questions that each of the candidates will have an opportunity to answer. Each of you candidates will have two minutes to answer each of these questions. And we're on a tight schedule, so please stick to the two-minute limit. The timer, which will pop up on the screen in a moment, will include and indicate how much time you have left to respond. If at any point one of you wishes to rebut a statement made by another candidate or elaborate on one of your own responses or respond to something that anybody else in the discussion said, you will have one 90-second opportunity to do so. Whenever you would like to use this opportunity, just use the raise hand function in Zoom, or if that is not working, or I'm not noticing it for some reason, just say something. And you will have that opportunity. And then after the general questions for all the candidates, we'll have an individual question for each candidate. And now it is my honor to introduce the candidates for Seattle City Council Position Nine. Cory Eichner, Nikita Oliver, and Breonna Thomas. And our fourth candidate, Sarah Nelson, will be joining us later in the forum. Thank you all for being here tonight. The first two questions will focus on housing and homelessness. Addressing homelessness requires different solutions for people facing different challenges. But homeless people are too often treated like a monolith, and both elected officials and the media too often conflate mental illness and addiction with violence. As a city council member, what would you do to address common misunderstandings about the causes and solutions to homelessness and what policy changes would result? And we'll start this round with Nikita Oliver. And you know what? I just messed that up. I am so sorry. I jumped right into the questions. Let's do the introductory statements, and you all have a few extra moments to think about that first question since I read it. I don't think I'm reading it. So let's do introductory statements. Two minutes each. I apologize, and we'll start with Nikita Oliver.
Thank you so much. Good evening. So excited to share space with you all today in the 43rd Legislative District. My name is Nikita Oliver, and I use they/them pronouns. I live here in the coastal sailors territories on Duwamis lands in the city we call Seattle. I'm a resident of the Rayner Beach neighborhood. I'm a community organizer, artist, cultural worker, executive director of Creative Justice, attorney, adjunct professor, and a local educator in our community. I'm running for Seattle City Council because it is time that we respond to the greatest needs in our city with solutions that are actually commensurate with the crisis. We are in a moment of unprecedented crisis, and it demands transformative responses that come from those that are most impacted by the issues. As a black-mixed, non-binary queer renter and worker, I know firsthand these crises. And as a community organizer, attorney, and resorted justice practitioner, I have the skills needed to build solutions in and with our impacted communities. And I've been a part of so many crucial changes in our city and our counties, such as resorted community pathways, the current defund movement of invest, of defunding from failed systems of public safety and investing in ones that meet basic needs are preventative and intervening. I helped pass the youth right to council ordinance at both the city and the county level and have been a part of seeing four million invested in public safety hubs and now 12 million that's being given out through an RFP through the city to build up our end community supports, to build public health and public safety for everyone. I am really honored to be endorsed by some really great people in our communities. UFCW-21, UAW-4121, IU-PAT-DC-5, the Bookworkers Union, WLC-1488, IATC-15, and ATU-587, which is our bus drivers, as well as Labor for Black Lives, our Seattle Equity Educators, Rep. Kirsten Harris Tally, our current council member, Timmy Morales, former council member Michael Bryan, and so many more. So thank you for allowing me to share space with you.
All right. Next, we will go to Cory Eichner, and I'm going to mix these up, so it's not always going to be in the same order, but Cory, you're next.
Pardon me. Wonderful and good evening, and thank you so much again for allowing me to be here and also similar to Nikita for sharing the space with everyone and particularly with fine folks I could be onstage with or virtual stage with. Always an enjoyable opportunity to share ideas back and forth. I go by he/him pronouns. And I am very much a new face to Seattle politics. I like to open and say that from the get-go. And that is because I'm an educator. For the last 18 years, I've gone to work every single day, serving our students and our families as a teacher and assistant principal in our public schools. I've had the great privilege of working with our students and families from across the region, from South King County all the way up to Shoreline, where I have fought for reform in our education system to ensure that our students and families furthest from educational justice have the access and opportunities they need to succeed. I continue this work here today, right here at home in Seattle, where I'm an assistant principal at the newly reopened Lincoln High School. As an advocate for our kids, I am every day investing in the future of Seattle. And yet, now more than ever, it feels like Seattle is heading down the wrong path. We shouldn't be in a place where it feels like the challenges that we are going up against are unsolvable or that we have a government unable to do it. Even though most of our city council and our city government share very similar liberal values, there's this polarization and division that stops collaboration and progress from happening. I'm running for city council because as a leader, I prioritize outreach and collaboration. Because in politics, you can't solve a problem alone, and you certainly can't do it unless you really understand what is not working. These inequities continue to exist in our city, and action needs to happen right now. We need new leadership to not only address the ongoing challenges we face, but who will also be forward-thinking to advance our city as it grows. Again, thank you so much for this time this evening. I'm really looking forward to sharing space with everyone.
All right, and now we'll move on to Breonna Thomas.
Good evening, 43rd and Facebook Live. I am Breonna Thomas, running for Seattle City Council Position Nine, the whole town. I am running as a proud Democrat because I came to Seattle when I was 23 years old, and I was able to find an affordable apartment. I was able to find a couple of jobs to stitch it together to make it work, and I was able to chase my dreams and my vision in this city because opportunity was abundant. I am deeply concerned that those opportunities are moving quickly away, particularly for people of color. And I think that that lived experience of knowing what Seattle can be for people really matters. It really matters in policymaking. It really matters in community outreach. And it really matters in the day-to-day job that we're all applying for here of governance. I have been working in and around government for about 11 years now. A couple of highlights, things I'm super proud of. I was the first campaign manager to pass the $15 minimum wage in Sea-Tac, which feels like 1,000 years ago, but also just like yesterday. I am the campaign manager that brought to you honest elections in the Democracy Voucher Program. After losing in the primary in a previous run, got right back up to it, kept working to strengthen our democratic processes. I have worked on police accountability and helped build the Office of Inspector General. I have to say I'm the only person in the race that's built an office from scratch inside the city. And last year, I was proud to be part of the council doing the work to hold this city together during one of the most challenging periods in its history. And that did include work on divesting from the Police Department and investing in community solutions. One of the things that's most concerning to me is that government has a pension for press releases and pilot projects and not long-term investment in opportunities for community to grow their capacity and come up with the solutions and have the time that they need to stand them up in a meaningful way. We need progressive revenue to do that, and I'm sure that Erica will ask us at least one question about that before the night's over. Thank you so much for having us.
All right. So first question, I'm going to read it again. So and we will start in reverse order from the last question. So we'll start with Breonna Thomas. Addressing homelessness requires different solutions for people facing different challenges. But too often, people experiencing homelessness are treated like a monolith, and both elected officials and the media too often conflate mental illness and addiction with violence. As a city council member, what would you do to address common misunderstandings about the causes and solutions to homelessness and what policy changes would result?
Yeah, big question to start with. Love to hear it. Couple of things. Not everybody enters homelessness from the same perspective. I started working on homelessness issues in 2005 when I was working for the Church Council of Greater Seattle. We made a 10-year pledge to end homelessness. Clearly, that hasn't happened. At that time, people experiencing homelessness were disproportionately women who had small children and full-time day jobs that had left a domestic violence situation. The support that that family needs is very different than a veteran who's experiencing PTSD and other mental health challenges. And we have to customize the solutions to homelessness to meet the people who are experiencing trauma, concurrent layers of trauma, exactly where they are. If you're an LGBTQ youth, it's been put out by your family on the east side of the mountain, and you came here for an opportunity. We need to have shelter that recognizes your identity, that creates a safe space for you to heal and to get back up on your feet and to figure out which direction you're prepared to go. In terms of policy, I think investments in short-term solutions via tiny houses and hoteling has really taken off this year. And I'd like to see the expansion of that in partnership with the county and the King County Regional Housing Authority. And one policy change I'd like to propose is to that body. When we did the 18 months of work of standing up the regional authority after demands for a regional solution to homelessness, folks came to the table and made two commitments. They committed to do the work, and they committed financially from their individual municipalities. Folks have walked back from those promises. They are no longer committing financially. And worse, they're passing legislation that criminalizes poverty and homelessness while refusing to cite shelters in their community, reverting to the position of the city of Seattle being the regional solution on homelessness. So I think some accountability in that body is absolutely called for, and that's something I'd get to work with on day one.
Next up, we have, I lost, I lost the order. Let's go to Nikita Oliver.
So our city needs to stop sweeps. We need to stop criminalizing poverty. And we need to invest in solutions that have a multiplicity of options for people who have entered into homelessness from different places. Reality is many in our city are paycheck away from losing our homes. I myself, during a period of time in college, actually slept in my car, slept on friends' couches because I was not able to find rent, a space to rent that was affordable. That was in 2006. We are in 2021, and the city is even less affordable. So a few things that we can do. In addition to stopping the sweeps, we can develop radical accessibility in our parks. We're not going to get everyone housed immediately, but radical accessibility means providing support such as health supports, mental and physical health supports, access to housing where it is available, ensuring that there's handwashing stations and shower stations when we can make that possible. So our parks are more accessible, but also it'd be easier to keep them clean if there was actual sewage and trash support there. The next thing is thinking about our short-term solutions. Having more hotels and tiny house villages that people can transition into and to stop using congregate shelters because they are traumatizing. Then we need to continue thinking about what are our midterm answers to the housing affordability crisis? Because it's much bigger than just homelessness. We literally have people teetering on the edge of being pushed into homelessness. So we need to both stop people from being pushed into it and get people who want to come inside a house. And then we need to think about folks who are parking. Are we providing safe places for people who are parking RVs or other ways in which they're staying to do that without being accosted by police or other neighbors who may not want them there? And to think about places like libraries and community centers becoming places of safety where people can access the resources that they need. And in the big picture, we need progressive taxation so we can build social, affordable, green housing for everyone.
Thank you. Cory Eichner.
Yeah, thank you so much. You know, a very important issue for us throughout all of Seattle, and I concur and agree with, you know, both Nikita and Breonna. I mean, homelessness happens for so many different reasons, and we need to change the conversation. You know, I think about even the work in education, you know, where we're looking at what was perceived at one point in time, the achievement gap of our students. And this was from a deficit model. We assumed that students were the root cause of it and not the system itself. People, you know, our neighbors without homes are happening because the system has failed them, you know, and inaction on the part of city leaders is just as harmful as the injustice itself. You know, first and foremost, we need to acknowledge that homelessness is real, and it occurs for multiple different reasons, and we need to lead, lead with that mindset. When we're trying to approach the homelessness issue, it's really a two-pronged approach. Similar to what's already been shared, we have to, you know, address both the short-term recovery and the long-term prevention. This needs to be a regional approach. Homeless, you know, communities without, neighbors without homes aren't happening just in Seattle. It's happening all across King County. And so we need to be partnering with the King County, you know, Regional Housing Authority and other partners around to address this firsthand and make this a budget priority. We have to employ a crisis response that increases the access and availability of our rapid rehousing measures to provide that immediate safety, safety net for our neighbors without home. As part of this immediate intervention, these rapid rehousing measures has to come without precondition, break conditions such as employment or being free from substance abuse. These rapid rehousing measures also has to acknowledge the various needs and different situations our neighbors with how homes are at. Similar to what, you know, Breonna and Nikita both talked about, you know, if you are among the LGBTQ, LGBTQ community, elderly community, or younger community, there are different needs that you have that these rapid rehousing measures must address. So we need to expand that through a variety of means and be creative that to ensure that we're addressing this firsthand.
All right. Our next question is also about housing and homelessness. The ongoing eviction moratorium has enabled many tenants who lost income due to COVID to stay in their homes. But it has also placed a burden on small landlords who have not received rent from some tenants since the pandemic began. If you are on the city council now, what would you do to ensure that renters don't face eviction when the moratorium ends while also protecting small landlords from the financial hardship of unpaid rent? And we'll start with Cory Eichner.
Great. Already off me. Yeah, wonderful question, and this is actually an area that I've had, you know, conversations with, with, with multiple people around the city. When we're looking at affordable housing, again, both in the short term as well as the long term, you know, partnering with our individual landlords is an important piece where we have cottages. We have our mother-in-laws, which offers affordable housing options, you know, for a variety of different individuals. I fully support protections of our tenants to ensure that they're not being, you know, evicted, you know, in a time of need. We need to ensure that they have access and opportunities, you know, with regards to protections as well as access to, you know, legal, legal representation to ensure that they're not being unjustly pushed out. We need to find an investment to also, you know, support our landlords. Similar to the COVID relief that has come to small businesses, we have to provide an opportunity for individual landlords to also apply for relief in the situation where they're not necessarily getting the rental income from their landlords, which is a necessity for them, for many of them to pay their mortgage, you know, as well. And so we need to mirror and match what we've seen happening on the federal level. Again, providing that immediate relief in the way of financial support for our individual landlords so that they can continue to house our tenants as we start coming out of, you know, COVID, the restrictions of COVID and increasing employment opportunities to get us all back on equal playing fields.
Thanks. Breonna Thomas.
Um, about a year ago, when the Great Confinement began, one of the things that was most obvious was that folks in the hospitality industry no longer had access to income. Just full-stop restaurants weren't a thing. And so the eviction moratorium sought to protect working people who could not be working. One of the things I appreciate most about the legislation passed at the city level and then slightly adopted by Governor Inslee was the six-month tail on the end of it that allowed for tenants and landlords to have conversations about repayment plans to meet the need of renters in the moment and the fact that landlords are absorbing that impact along the way. Another policy that I think I'm really proud of is legal defense. If you are facing an unrighteous landlord eviction at the end of the moratorium, you have a legal defense to stand up in court and say, I am in this position because of COVID. And then on top of that, we funded actual lawyers to match with those folks who, so they have their day in court, and they're well represented. Much like deportation, we know that when you have an attorney in the room working with someone who is potentially being victimized by a malacting landlord, their outcomes are significantly better in favor of the tenant. So keeping people in their homes and then giving them a legal defense and an actual lawyer, steps one, two, and three. We've also expanded the winter eviction bill. Oh, sorry, we have the winter eviction bill. And now the school year eviction moratorium is coming up to do good work of councilmember Swat and Morales. So I think that we are in a place where here in the city of Seattle, where renters should be able to be stabilized through the end of March. That's the forward-thinking policy that I've learned to craft on this council and with this council. It's not just today's crisis, but it's how are we going to rebuild? How are we going to recover? And how are we going to move forward? In terms of getting dollars in the pockets of small landlords, we need to go to the federal government. There are investments being made right now in law enforcement at the federal level to stabilize and retain officers. And that is not a form of public safety, whereas housing stability is indeed. So let's move those dollars where they need to be. And that's in sustaining our good acting small landlords.
Great. And next, we have Nikita Oliver.
Yeah, so I'll speak very specifically to our small landlords. Our city and our county are receiving ARPA funds. And since we know that ensuring that our small landlords are supported is important, we could actually right now be setting funds aside to support them and sustaining. I think that continuing the work of not simply divesting from policing, but the entirety of the criminal punishment system in Seattle would open up more funds to do that work. I think the six-month tail on the moratorium is great, but we really need two years. The crisis is not over. The hospitality industry has not recovered. Many hotel workers are not back at work. And so this crisis is going to continue for quite a long time. And so I think it's important to also be pursuing legislation. What are our options for literally just canceling rent? And thinking whole-scale from everything from banks all the way up through renters as, as a process of doing that. Now, that's not going to happen just at the city level. It is going to require some, some work through multiple bureaucracies at the county and the state level. But there are possibilities of making that happen. I think providing legal supports for landlords and figuring out how to develop equitable payment plans is going to be really important. I'm sure many of our landlords have never encountered anything like this, and they don't know what they're doing. And so they may unintentionally harm tenants. Providing legal support both to tenants and to landlords to be able to do that in a fair way is important. And what are the technicalities of seeing those payment plans come around is going to be important. And then the last thing I would suggest is the city does have fines or fees or taxes that we put upon properties. Where are the areas in which we can forgive those fines or fees or taxes to relieve small landlords of those burdens that they might be able to turn that savings that they're getting back over to renters and be willing to invest in the cancel rent movement? Because we've now provided some incentive to do that.
And just a reminder to everybody that if you want to respond or add any, anything onto your own response at any point, you have one opportunity to do that, and you have 90 seconds. So just raise your hand, wave your hand around physically, butt in, you know, whatever, whatever you need to do if you want to take that opportunity. The next couple of questions are going to focus on policing and public safety. And the first question will go first to Nikita Oliver. Are you in favor of defunding SPD by 50% or more? And if so, what measures will you take as a city council member to ensure those funds are funneled out of the criminal justice system and into community-based crisis intervention programs? If not, why not?
Yes, I am in favor of defunding SPD by 50% or more, and honestly, defunding the entirety of the criminal punishment system. Seattle Municipal Court does what are called misdemeanors, many of which are criminalizing poverty. It is a system that impacts a lot of our folks without homes. And rather than criminalizing people, jailing them, prosecuting them, we should be investing in supports that are preventative and intervening. And we need to do the work of meeting people's basic needs. The sheer issue around housing puts a lot of people in a really bad position and pushes them into the criminal punishment system. So we need to be transforming the entirety of that system, not just policing. How do we invest in communities? This is work that I've been doing for many years, but especially in the last 18 months have contributed a lot to. I think the work around the four million that has gone into public safety hubs during the rebalancing package is key and continuing to grow those public safety hubs that are built in community where people have the relationship and the rapport to help do things like intervene when there might be gang violence. The $12 million RFP that is currently out for the city to help do some scaffolding, it only exists for 18 months. We need to be finding out in our budget as we continue to do this defund work, how we help these community-based organizations continue to grow, have prevailing wages and healthcare for their workers, and build the myriad of supports that, supports that we need. Moving 911 out of Seattle Police Department is key so we can have a menu of options when people call for help. Only about 1.3% of the calls that come into 911 are what is characterized as violent behavior. The other 98.7% are mental health crises, domestic violence, property issues, and parking issues. We could be providing a menu of options that actually respond to the need that has come in rather than providing an officer with a gun and a badge that will likely escalate the issue. Those supports do exist in community. They need funding, so it requires us to defund and then invest.
Next up, we have Cory Eichner.
Yeah, I fully support the reallocation of funds, and I do so with, you know, within mind that we do it towards the plan that we put in place. And that could be 50%. It could be 25%. It could be whatever is warranted in the plan that we put forward. You know, I agree with Nikita when we're looking at, you know, the reform that we need to have within the criminal justice system. You know, we should be looking to, you know, utilize our funds, you know, to invest into providing supports first and foremost that serves the basic needs, you know, of our citizens. And secondly, when conflict arises, you know, we should be looking towards restoration and not punitive consequences. As a first step of this, I support us, you know, auditing our initial laws that are on the books and working to decriminalize those behaviors that can better be resolved through community-based or community-focused interventions. The, the behaviors and the conflict that happens in our, you know, in our community around all of Seattle doesn't have to be, you know, addressed, you know, through the police force or through punitive consequences, you know, we need to work towards that restoration. You know, we have to grow this system of alternative responses. This is a great idea, and to merely just defund without having that in place, you know, creates, you know, potential challenges that might arise in that transition period. And so we need to be looking at community-based organizations, you know, and other programs like LEAD as the infrastructure, you know, or example that we could follow to put this into place. Once this infrastructure is there, you know, we can then expand our 211 resource model to make sure that it is clear. This is who you call if you need assistance, if you need help, whether that's with your basic needs, whether that's because there's a conflict that's going on, and that 211 can then get you to the appropriate resource. We have to create the system that's in place that moves us in the right direction, that shifts the criminal justice system again, away from punitive concepts, consequences, and more towards providing for the basic needs and restoration in our community.
All right. And last, Breonna Thomas.
I think one of the great things about this race is having worked in Nikita's orbit for the last five years, I can always, always absolutely attest to their ability to organize. I can always, always absolutely attest to their ability to organize and push an issue from the outside. And I think that my ability to be on the inside to catch that ball has created for some good partnerships in the last five years. Proud of the work we've been able to do together. In terms of defunding the police by a specific number, I don't have that number. We're doing an assessment of what police do and do not need to respond to. As you've heard on this panel already, I think committing to a number without that information sets us all up for disappointment. I do absolutely believe in divesting from that system and investing in community based solutions. And how I would move forward on it as a council member gets a little complicated. We have a collective bargaining agreement that absolutely refused to accept and acknowledge and incorporate accountability measures that we passed in 2017. Washington state law says it where a municipal law is in conflict, the collective bargaining agreement, the CBA trumps. So we need a CBA that actually invests and envisions the commute, the calls from community to change culture, accountability and civilian oversight of our police department. In order to do that, we need a new CBA. We need somebody at the table that knows how to hold the line and where the line lives. And we also need to get out from under the consent decree. Last summer, there was a move by the city attorney's office and the mayor to get us out from under the consent decree, but it was really poorly timed because there were tear gassing here and violence everywhere. And so community clearly and very righteously asked that we not make that move at that time. And so the city took a step back and listened to community, but we have to get out from under the consent decree. So we actually have control of our own police department. We can police our own police right here in Seattle. We don't have to go through a federal monitor to change policy, to change budget or to change practice. I also call on the members of the SPAG that are not satisfied with their current leadership to change their leadership. If that really is the culture that they're asking to move forward and be recognized in.
All right, thank you. Next question is about participatory budgeting. What is your experience with participatory budgeting? And do you think it's a viable option for funding alternatives to policing and other community services? And we'll start with Brianna.
Yes, I'm assuming you want more words. Absolutely.
Always free not to take all your time too.
Roger that. I absolutely believe in participatory budgeting and living through, quite frankly, the racial tension of putting money into the hands of communities of color over the last year has been really gross to watch up close. But I'm glad that that fight is moving forward and I'm glad that we are partnering in a meaningful way with the Office for Civil Rights to execute those contracts and get that system up and running in real time, trying to keep the commitments we made last summer. I do have one concern around PB. And I think that the idea behind the project is to invest in our BIPOC communities that have traditionally been either neglected or divested from for other parts of the city and other communities. When we live in a city that is still 87% white, we have to rely on our neighbors that are not from communities of color to also participate in a system and make the decision to invest in BIPOC communities. Now, I'm not saying that's not going to happen or it couldn't happen, but if you put $30 million on a table and ask somebody to vote, they're going to vote in their own self interest time and time again. So how do we stand up PB in a way that is legal or under Washington state law and benefits communities of color for whom those dollars are intended? There's 45 seconds back.
All right. We will now go to Nikita.
So I'm really honored to have been a part of the initial community group that worked with the National PV Organization to bring PV to the city as a possible thing that we could be doing. So a community could have more engagement in the democratic process of how our budget is determined. Currently, if you're not an insider or don't have a connection to a council member or can't get time off at 2:00 PM, you might have a really hard time participatory, participating in the budget process. And so participatory budgeting is an opportunity to make budgeting more democratic. The beauty of even though this being complicated in a state that still will not allow affirmative action based on race is the Black Brilliance Research Project that was done specifically by black peoples. Black queer folks, black sex workers, black elders has laid out the buckets for how participatory budgeting will work in the city. And those buckets are outlined based on the needs of some of the most marginalized black folks in our city. So while yes, we need our majority white city to help vote on how these dollars are distributed into black community, the Black Brilliance Research has really undergirded in a very creative and innovative way. What are the needs of, of the most marginalized black community members to ensure that at least a portion, if not a large portion of those dollars are directed to the needs of black community? I think that we can continue to do this work and expand the pot. And I hope that in this next budget session, we grow it from the current dollars that it is to a much larger pot. Because the other thing is there are so many community needs. It's just simply not enough money of our $6.2 billion budget. And I think the city needs to be committed to continuing to be a part of the work in our state to overturn I-200. We need repair and reparations and participatory budgeting and the Black Brilliance Research Project is a good step in that direction. But it is not sufficient and we need the opportunity to do that work at our city level.
And last we have Corey.
Yeah, the answer is yes. Participatory budgeting, you know, is possible and it's really important, you know, for us to be doing. You know, when I look at policymaking across the board, I will frequently, you know, look at the unintended consequences of what we were trying to do. You know, all too often in so many systems, you know, those who have the authority, those who have power take it upon themselves to define, you know, what this, what they think the solution needs to be without actually digging in to see if it's actually solving the problem that they were intending to do. That's where participatory budgeting comes in. It's going straight to the source. We're involving those that are the most directly impacted to make sure that they're brought to the table so that we can move forward in a way that's addressing the challenge of the city to, you know, with those who are most directly impacted. When I look at my work in education, we do this in a very small, you know, small scale at our, at the building level. We utilize participatory budgeting. We as an administrative team don't have direct oversight of deciding exactly how that money is going to be spent. We have to engage all of our stakeholders, our staff, our faculty, our parents, our students and our community members. We have to engage these folks that we're making decisions in the best interest, you know, of moving our school forward. What I've learned about this particular process is participatory budgeting is only as good as how action oriented and intentional you are. Whenever you are trying to engage all of your community, you have to be very thoughtful about tracking where those voices are coming from. If you open up a process to say, we want to hear from you, typically that process is going to favor those that the system is already working for. And so within the city, we need to be tracking as we are putting together participatory budgeting or we're engaging in two way communication, we should be tracking very clearly where that feedback, where that information is coming from, who's at the table and who's not at the table. And if they're not at the table, then we need to bring them, you know, our, you know, ourselves. We have to take that action to get them to the table because participatory budgeting is just a word and an idea unless we directly act on it.
All right. The next two questions will focus on climate change and transportation. The scale of the climate crisis demands action at all levels of government. What will you do beyond electrifying the city's vehicle fleet to reduce greenhouse gas emissions within the city of Seattle? And we'll start with Corey.
Well, Dagan, you had my first answer to start with and where I, where I put a lot of passion for. No. I think broadly, when, when I think about the climate change and I think about the environmental challenges that we have, all too often, we put this in the context of a trade off. And I think that's the challenge that we face. We view making environmentally conscious decisions as a trade off between either A or either B. While I know you said we couldn't directly go there, when you're looking at, you know, electrifying our transit system or electrifying our cars, we view that as a, well, if, you know, we're going to do that, then we're not going to get our motor, you know, motor vehicles. And it's going to impact the manufacturing industry. We need to be utilizing the scientific innovations that we have that push forward a green Seattle. And we need to be working with our manufacturing industry and to, to say, this isn't a trade off. This is a new way of doing it. If we look at creating a fully electric metro system, if we look at infusing new construction standards for all the new construction being built throughout the city, saying that we're going to utilize, you know, electric as opposed to gas. We're going to be utilizing eco-friendly, eco-friendly technologies. This isn't a trade off. This is actually boosting our economy and moving us towards a greener city. The assembly line back in the twenties, you know, reshook, you know, shook up the entire industry. And it changed the way we did things. And it wasn't going, you know, at first it was seen as a trade off. And then we quickly learned that it actually boosted the economy over time. We need to be looking at it that way. Shifting to a greener Seattle doesn't have to be about losing something. It actually can be about boosting our economy, growing our city and making it greener.
You're on mute. Nikita Oliver is next, and I believe Sarah Nelson is joining us. So I'll repeat the question. And we'll, we'll have her go last on this question, but Nikita, you're up.
Yes. So I think there's so many things we can be doing. The first is we need to build green. So when we talk about social affordable housing, we're talking about social affordable green housing. Buildings are one of the fastest growing emitters in our city. The one that we must decrease the most now is transportation. So how do we do that? We need to address our zoning issues that are not allowing us to build density in such a way that our transportation infrastructure actually makes it feasible for more people to take public transportation and fewer people to actually drive in single occupancy vehicles, making it so more workers can live close to work, close to childcare, close to grocery stores are all ways that will start to decrease our transportation emissions. I think that we have to keep making strides on the Green New Deal. So some of the jumpstart money is going to go towards weatherization and retrofitting. And I played a role in helping get that GND piece into that work. Because we know that our, our older buildings, buildings where people live who are low income are going to be the least likely to receive that weatherization and that retrofitting. And we need to prioritize dollars to help folks do that because we know that the climate crisis is not later. It is right now. We need to have apprenticeship and pre-apprenticeship programs into the green economy. If we want more people to feel invested in seeing us achieve our climate goals, people need to know that there are economic opportunities for them in the work that's going to come out of this. And, you know, we still need a municipal bank. I'm still on this municipal bank because our investments in Wall Street banks that are invested in tar sands and fossil fuels, that are also invested in the larger criminal punishment system are going to be things that will continue to drive the climate crisis, not just locally, but globally. And having either a state or a municipal bank is an opportunity for us to invest our dollars in a way that benefits our communities and detracts from our investment in a system that wants to continue exploiting the planet and exploiting people. And we can stop that by not investing in those banks.
Great. Brianna, you're next.
Erica, can I ask that you please repeat the question?
Absolutely. Question is, and this is also for the benefit of Sarah Nelson who's joining us. The scale of the climate crisis demands action at all levels of government. What will you do beyond electrifying the city's vehicle fleet to reduce greenhouse gas emissions within the city of Seattle?
Great, thank you. Um, you know, I agree with many of the ideas that have been already put out there. So I will start from a place of focusing on communities of color that have been disproportionately impacted by greenhouse, I'm sorry, by climate change. Particularly our communities of color in South Park. You know, the children there have three times the rate of asthma. They cannot even breathe clean air. Their life expectancies are shrunk simply based on their zip code. So I think making sure that the investments that we do make in the action that we do take is based in the communities that have already been most impacted by a failure to address the problem as we started. I think transportation really is the key here. We are a city that relies on, on cars a little bit too much than we need to. And that's because the transportation system isn't meeting people where they're at and where they want to go. So if you're a non-traditional worker, what, are you going to get a 3:00 AM bus? There may not be a bus for you from your home to where your place of work is. You know, not everybody works a nine to five. I, I think the other thing that would be key is making sure the investments in service hours are going to the communities that benefit from the most. So we're all working on one seat rides so that you can get one seat from any part of town to another part of town. The current momentum is to have those rides come from the north end into Seattle. And there's already quite a bit of service in that space, but the priority of the folks in the Rainier Valley that may need to get to their job in the far north end at the tippy tippy top of District Five, hasn't been a meaningful part of the conversation. So if we're going to decide where we're putting resources to move people, it needs to be for people who are most benefited by those resource. And I think those people are working moms in the Rainier Valley that are already probably juggling two or three jobs. And we need to get them moving across the city as quickly and efficiently as possible. So they don't have to rely on their own single occupancy vehicles.
Thanks. So I believe we're having some technical challenges getting Sarah Nelson on. And hopefully by the end of this next question, we'll have her all, all set to, to respond. And then we'll, we'll go on to a couple more questions and then some individual questions. The next question is also about climate change, transportation. The city has failed to make significant progress over the past several years towards Vision Zero, which is the goal of reducing the number of traffic fatalities and serious injuries to zero. And last year, the city had more fatalities than any year since 2013. What will you do to make city streets places for people, not just cars? And to reduce deaths from traffic violence in Seattle? And we'll start with Nikita this time.
Yeah, and this also plays into our climate goals, making our city streets safer. One major priority here is just getting vehicles off the road so that folks that cycle, folks that walk have safer ways to do that. We are not reaching our Vision Zero goals. And simultaneously, the move Seattle levy that voters voted on in 2015 has fallen very short of its goals and it's unclear why. So we have areas of the city like on Aurora where there are no east, west buses. And there are also no sidewalks to get to public transportation. In every election, we hear electeds talk about sidewalks and neighborhoods and BIPOC and low income communities. And those sidewalks seem to never appear. So I want to make a commitment as a city council member to actually pursue getting sidewalks into areas where there are multiple, there have been multiple issues and where communities have been advocating for them. Another issue is just thinking about things like speed bumps. The Duwamish Long House has been advocating for a speed bump outside of the Long House for an extremely long time. And the fact that there have been so many administrative and bureaucratic barriers to responding to a very evident safety issue is really problematic. And there are multiple communities that are in the same position in the central district in Rainier Beach that are advocating for things like speed bumps, stoplights or crosswalks. And we as a city should be prioritizing those, especially in neighborhoods where we know people walk or take public transportation a lot. Really thinking about the move Seattle levy and other infrastructure, 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 that's a hard word. Infrastructure investments is going to be key and doing it in a way where we are actually accountable to voters about that. So the next time we ask voters to, to vote on those kinds of investments, we need to be clear about what neighborhoods we're going to do it in. And targeting those neighborhoods where there are the highest incidence of fatalities and where people are most likely to be walking, cycling is really key to that.
Thanks. So we're going to go next to, to Corey and then to Brianna, and then we'll have Sarah jump in. So Corey, Vision Zero question. And let me know if anybody needs me to repeat the question at any time.
Yeah, the, the answer is mass transit. You know, we are facing a situation where, you know, the capacity and number of roads in our city hasn't changed. We are very car reliant. You know, we are adding rightfully so, and we want to be adding alternative forms of transportation, you know, safe walking zones, place for running, you know, biking and all of that. But we are putting it on top of an existing structure of roads without actually moving towards the need to remove the number of vehicles on the streets. And so if we really want to, you know, make progress towards, you know, you know, Vision Zero, we need to fully see our regional approach to a transportation system throughout all of Seattle and also connected, you know, to our, our, you know, outer neighborhoods. When we're thinking about mass transit, yes, we need to get folks from the north to the south, east and the west. This system needs to all speak with one another and work in conjunction with one another. But on top of that, that regional system must also connect with our outer cities and our outer, outer suburbia. This is because we have individual, you know, people in the city traveling in and out for, you know, for work and for pleasure. And so until we find a way to create reasons for folks to get rid of their cars, which is a regional transit system, we're going to continue to create, you know, you know, unsafe environments on our streets. Because we keep putting stuff on top of each other. When I think about the alternative transportation of bikes, this is a great idea that we should be doing, but we are creating not standalone bike lanes because we don't have the space for it, because we still have to have the car lanes. We're just putting them on top of the car lanes as opposed to creating a safe way to do that. We have to reduce the number of cars. We do that through regional transportation.
Great. Brianna.
Um, yeah, thank you. This question's become pretty personal to me as I got hit by a car earlier this year in a crosswalk that was clearly marked, but apparently the person in the intersection had other places to go. I, I think one of the things that we can do is make sure that we're getting clear signals on all of our intersections, cutouts that make it accessible, no matter what your physical ability is to get in and out. A lack of curb cutouts has really become apparent as a need for not only folks that are physically, that have physical, I'm sorry, that are differently evolved physically. Sorry y'all, it's, it's eight o'clock at night. But also moms with strollers, right? Like folks doing grocery runs, like people need to be able to get in and out of sidewalks seamlessly. So that in the situation that I had, it's a little bit easier to jump back and avoid. that I had, it's a little bit easier to jump back and avoid potentially encountering a vehicle. I think the other thing to what Cory said was, we just have to get more folks using transit so that we don't have the opportunity to have such an impact or a negative experience. And we do that with 15-minute neighborhoods, right? If you don't have to, if you're not moving around the town in ways that are outside of your community or your neighborhood because you've got everything you need there, you've got groceries, you've got childcare, you've got entertainment. If you have a community that is accessible on foot with well-lit, well-signaled corners, I think that we see the impacts of actual impacts go way down.
Thanks. And last, we have Sarah Nelson, who's just joined us. I'm glad we could get the technical problems figured out. So the question again is about Vision Zero and what will you do to make cities places for people, not just cars, streets?
Hi, everyone. Sorry to be late. Thank you for including me. So I agree with everything that folks have said. We actually do have a policy that was passed in 2007, the Complete Streets Ordinance. That policy is about creating and maintaining safe streets for everyone, and it has a checklist for how, when any improvement to a right-of-way is contemplated, it must provide infrastructure for pedestrians, bicycle transit riders, and people of all abilities. To my mind, council has not been using the checklist to work with SDOTs so that the Complete Streets policies are front and center for any changes to our roadways. So we've got to do that. I completely agree with road diets and other measures, but I think that there is a, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, we just have to use and implement the policy that was passed. So I encourage everybody to take a look at that. It was Ordinance 122386. I do want to address a couple of questions before because it is kind of in my sweet spot when it comes to reducing Seattle's, you know, carbon footprint and what are we going to do? You can only have to, we're not going to meet our climate goals unless we engage the private sector, all right? And the private sector has to step up and invest in green technologies that will reduce, you know, emissions. They have to revamp their operations. They must invest in heat exchangers. Fremont Brewing has been a big advocate to try to promote scalable solutions so that businesses can take the next step. I'm all about leading the private sector. I can lead by example, and I, you know, who better to try to convince the private sector to do their job on this front than a small business owner? And so my focus will be on incentivizing and mandating, you know, regulations so that private businesses can start playing a greater role in this.
All right. The next and final question is going to be about accountability and the balance of power in the city. Earlier this year, the 43rd District Democrats called on the current mayor to resign. Knowing that the city council has the ability to budget, but only the mayor can spend the money, what will you do to hold future mayors accountable? And we'll start with Brianna Thomas.
Delightful. I think that what we have seen in the last couple of years under the Durkin administration is a fiscally and racially motivated bias against working people and people of color, real talk. And I think that the council has the ability to call the executive out when it's consistently, decision after decision, whether it's the sugary beverage, tax revenue, miscommunication about how that was going to get spent, and just straight-up fear-mongering that happened in our community. The council has the ability and the power of the bully pulpit to call that noise out. And I think that we are all tired of a little bit too much Northwest nice, and we don't actually hold our elected officials accountable at parallel levels. The council is a co-equal branch of government, and it has the accountability and responsibility to behave like a co-equal branch of government. I do believe that there have been conversations with the executive's office in private, but I think that the courage that is necessary to take an executive on in real time and in public is, it's painful and it's real, and we had to do it with Ed Murray. And I don't think, quite frankly, the city has gotten over it. But being part of the team that was the first council office to ask for that mayor to step down because of the damage they were doing to the confidence in our community has shown me that there is a path to accountability for an executive from the council. And I certainly hope whoever gets elected in the executive position next year never requires us to use that authority.
All right. Next, we'll go to Nikita Oliver.
As a community member and organizer, I have gone toe-to-toe with the mayor, and not from a position of power, but from a position of community-based power. On June 3rd, this day last year, we marched 12,000 people from Cal Anderson Park down to City Hall, where the mayor wanted to have a closed-door meeting and the only way we would attend if it was livestreamed. I am a person who holds the line and believe that our legislative body needs to be willing to hold the line on what is best in our city. We have waited too long to address the housing crisis. We've seen too many progressive taxes thwarted, and in the interest of big business and corporations, not in the interest of community members that already pay the most in taxes. Once in that office, though, I think community organizing plays a big part of our ability to have a community that also pressures the mayor while we're holding the line. And having that connection with community as well as organized labor is a huge part of our ability to put that pressure on. I think that we've seen council members say things in the midst of a huge uprising, but when no one is watching and the mayor is doing things that are problematic for our most vulnerable communities, council members are not as bold, and it should not require marching 12,000 people from a park to City Hall to have council members do their job as legislators. So I feel like I've demonstrated that as a community organizer, and I would like the opportunity to demonstrate that as a city council member.
Thank you. Next up, Sarah Nelson.
So I think there might be a built-in turf war between the executive and the legislative branch, and the power swings both ways, but there has not been a positive relationship between council and the executive since Norm Rice. So I think that there is some work to do on the relationship building. So, and in council, I would hope that whoever assumes the mayor's office is open to working better with us and agreeing that we have the same values and we will together share credit for some of these things. Now, it is true that the executive decides kind of how to allocate money within certain budget lines, but the fact is that council passes policy and has the ability to proviso funds. So it's not as though council doesn't have any power, and I've seen this council do this on numerous occasions, withholding money until certain benchmarks or demands are met. So that is a tool that can be used, and hopefully, and also we have statements of legislative intent. So it's not that we're completely powerless. We pass budgets, and we also make policy. So that is where our power lies, and hopefully, we can have a mayor with whom we have a better relationship.
All right. Thank you. And last, we'll hear from Cory Eichner.
Yeah, I think the idealist in me can say, well, it begins with relationships to start with. You know, we need to, you know, have those to begin with so that we have, you know, a working understanding of, you know, each other when we have differences of opinions. But that being said, as part of the legislative process, it's not always idealistic. It doesn't always work that way. And when I think about accountability, I'm going to go back to PB. Like, I'm going to go back to, you know, this is the city council, this is the executive of the city. We should be engaging with our community, and it's not just the council's responsibility to hold the executive accountable or vice versa. It is the voter's responsibility to hold city government accountable. If we are creating a system that is truly engaging all of Seattle, whether it's PB or in, you know, other means, you know, we would have that ongoing, open, two-way communication. And if the executive or a member of the council is not doing something that's in alignment with the best interests of the city, it won't be up to just the members of the city council to stand up and say that's wrong. That will be the entire city standing up and saying that's wrong. Accountability in government is wildly important, and we need to hold each other accountable, both during the legislative sense, but we also need to do it in a way where we are committed to working with, listening to, and prioritizing the citizens of Seattle because they should be part of that as well.
All right. Now, we're going to move on to a few questions for individual candidates, and we're going to start with Sarah Nelson. You've said that you decided to run, because Seattle is going in the wrong direction. Can you give one concrete example of this and outline your approach to addressing it? And we'll give each candidate two minutes to respond to these questions. Sarah? I think you're on mute, Sarah.
I think one sign of the council going in the wrong direction is its inability to really design and implement effective solutions to our unsheltered population. We've doubled the budget in the past three years, and the problem keeps getting worse. That is an indication of wrong direction and abnegating responsibility to provide solutions so that we don't have as many unsheltered folks living and that we can provide actual housing solutions and better organize the service providers and the housing providers with whom we contract, many of whom do not reach benchmarks. That needs to be fixed. We need to understand better who is living without shelter. And I'm not just talking about the visible. I'm talking about the people that are couch surfing because they can't find an apartment or they lost their job or something like that. So we don't have a good sense of those numbers. We don't know which providers are providing which services. There are gaps and overlaps. And so I think that the best way, when I say wrong direction, I'm talking about ineffective solutions, lack of political will to do something different so that we don't keep going down the path that we're on. And that's just one example of wrong direction, I would say.
All right. Thank you. The next question is for Nikita Oliver. You've said in the past, the city should completely defund the Seattle Police Department and invest in programs that provide real community safety, like alternative intervention strategies. Has your position on police abolition changed over the past year, and what concrete steps would you propose as a council member toward defunding the police?
I think that this question is purposely trying to make me seem like a radical and ignores the fact that abolition is not a short-term, it's not going to happen tomorrow, but it is a long-term strategy to get to a world where people actually get to live in safe communities. Everyone does. Reality is, in the United States, we've abolished things before. We abolished slavery, we abolished segregation. And it's important to see that the extension of policing from enslavement and its continuation into the criminal punishment system, where we live in a world where the United States incarcerates 25% of the world's population, but only has 5% of the world's population, and yet we're not the safest country in the world to ask us why. We should be the safest country in the world of policing and prisons work. So yes, I am an abolitionist and believe very much in building a world beyond prisons and police. I think that the defund movement is a pathway towards that. So we take, we continue to shrink the Seattle Police Department budget, as well as shrink their duties, and then grow the scaffolding in community to have prevention and intervention strategies that respond to mental health crises, that respond to domestic violence in a way that actually supports survivors. 60% of survivors, according to the National Domestic Abuse Survivor Network, says that they would have preferred housing rather than police intervention. We are literally using a strategy that does not help people and does not save lives. It is reactionary, and it doesn't prevent harm or crime. If we really cared about anti-violence, and I consider myself an anti-violence advocate, we would do the work that prevents violence from ever occurring, which means meeting people's basic needs, housing, healthcare, clean water, good food, economic and educational opportunity. These are things that many communities have been historically and presently denied based on race, class, and gender. And if we're going to build a society that's actually welcoming for everyone, we will move beyond prisons and police. It won't happen tomorrow, but I do believe it can.
Thank you. Next question is for Cory Eichner. You're the only candidate here who's never run for office before, and so I'm basing a lot of what I know about you on your campaign website. And one of the positions that you have there is, you say that one of your top priorities is eliminating institutional racism. There are two black people running for this position. Why do you believe you're the best person in this race to lead on race and social justice?
Thank you. I have never run for public office. That makes me uniquely different. I don't view myself as being best or better. I sincerely believe, and what I opened with, I appreciate and enjoy these opportunities with all these fine candidates on the stage to hear their ideas, you know, what they believe is best for Seattle, because I believe everyone running for office is doing so, you know, with the best intent and with, you know, a love for this city and wanting to improve things, you know, for the better. So I don't put things in the context of me being better then, or better situated, or more qualified for it. I'm differently qualified. Being new to Seattle politics, I don't have all of the answers, clearly even within this particular forum. I don't have decades of frontline experience advocating city council or working within city council. You know, I have nearly two decades of my influence being on the individual level, working with kids, educating kids, pushing them to be active citizens and to be part, you know, of our act of democracy. So my influence looks different. But as a white man of privilege, I have been 100% committed to reform in our education system. I firmly believe that our education system has been broken, and I have spent my career working to ensure that our students and families furthest from educational justice have a system that can work for them. I'm not there yet with the work in education. We have a long way to go. But when I look at the work that needs to be done in Seattle, what I see is the need to bring somebody new to the table. When I talk about my work in education, I am somebody who on any given day will have two different parents at my desk, both of which are advocating for different reasons, different things, and for good reason. They love their kids. I don't have the option to choose one or the other. I have to find a way to create a solution to very differing views, and that's what I want to bring to city council.
Thank you. And the final question is for Brianna Thomas. Speaking of decades of experience, you're running as someone with experience in government, but sometimes experience can mean a commitment to the status quo. Can you give an example of a position you hold or a policy you would advance that differs from that of your boss, Council President Lorena Gonzalez?
You bet. I disagree with my boss on the first-in-time legislation when it comes to access to housing. I think that that legislation was well-intentioned. I think it was thoughtfully crafted, but I think it is not having the impact that it was put out there to have, which is making sure that folks who are working class, who are people of color, who are not having the shiniest credit scores of the largest pocketbooks, have access to housing. And I think that what we are seeing in actual practical application is that working people don't have all day to sit on Zillow. They don't have all day to put in applications all over town, and they're certainly not going to be the first one compared to somebody who can build an algorithm to track that opportunity. I think that we need to have a universal application fee that, you know, instead of having to pay $50, $50, $100 every time you apply for housing, you pay one time, it lasts for 90 days. Hopefully, that gives you enough time to find housing stability. But while I think that that was put in place with the best of intentions, I don't think the outcomes are increased access to housing, affordable housing, in communities that folks want to live in, because they're not, the people we're trying to help aren't going to be the first folks in line. I also think that it does great damage to smaller landlords who should have a little bit more autonomy in deciding who they want to rent to, obviously, clearly within our constitutional expectations without bias, and in a way that the Office for Civil Rights would uphold. But, you know, I think that when you do make the investment as a smaller landlord to provide housing, ideally affordable housing to the community, you should have a larger say in who it is you are renting to.
Thank you. And thanks to all of our participants. We could go on all night, I'm sure, but unfortunately, that's all we have time for this evening. Once again, I want to thank all of the city council candidates who came out tonight and shared time with us, and want to remind everybody on this call that the primary election for city council and mayor is on August 3rd, and I'm going to turn it back over to Maddie. Thanks, everybody.
Hi, hello, everyone. Thank you so much, Erica, for your fantastic moderation this evening, and to all of our candidates for joining us on a Thursday. I would also love to just thank the volunteers and the 43rd District Board members that organized this event behind the scenes and kept it running smoothly. We truly could not have done this without you. As just one last closing reminder, the 43rd District Democrats is hosting our endorsements meeting on June 15th. If you are not currently a member, you have until this Saturday, June 5th, at 11:59 PM to register in order to be able to vote for endorsements at that June meeting. If you're a returning 2020 member, you have until June 14th at 11:59 PM to register. We'll be reposting that information below, and we hope to see you all at our endorsements meeting on June 15th. Thank you all so much for joining, and please enjoy the rest of your evening. Thanks, everyone.